Ms. Newman? Dr. Taub?
Here.
Dr. Hans? Landsman? Herman?
Here.
Ms. Guadalupe?
Here.
Ms. Bernard? Mr. Torres? Mr. Rubin?
Here.
Dr. Klotz?
Doctor, here.
Mr. Kemp? Ms. Summers?
Thank you very much. I do have one announcement. I want to make sure you understand, I have to be out of here by midnight.
Good luck.
Anyway. Public comment? Do we have anyone that wishes to state any public comment at this time? We'll have another opportunity later on in the meeting. First item on the agenda is the revenue update. Anya?
So for the board members, the majority of the update is in the cover letter, but I will walk through that just briefly. I've been giving you updates on the fiscal year 20 revenue each month as we continue to have some issues with the capitation amounts and the distribution of the fiscal year 20 rates that were provided in the certification letters. So January, we did see a significant increase in our HAB waiver payment, so that was good. That was included some of the retroactive HAB waiver payments that we had been waiting on. It still looks to be about, they're funding us for about 50 less people every month than they should be, so there's ongoing concerns with the HAB waiver payment. In addition to that, we're still noticing that the regular capitation payment, which is where the bulk of our money comes in, is still not showing the amount of increase that was listed in the capitation payment certification letters. So what, last week at the PIHP CEO MDHHS meeting, we did get them to agree to sit down and have a meeting to discuss those things specifically and any outstanding issues that we still had. Each of us, PIHPs, will be sending specific examples to them so they can look those up and be prepared for that meeting, but they are willing to have that, and I believe they have scheduled that already. In addition to that, the death recruitment I've been mentioning to you all, they're putting a hold on that in the short term. Until we get some of this revenue issue straightened out, they are pausing that. Apparently, they can do it when they want to, just not when I ask them to. But at least for February, they're going to go ahead and pause the death recruitment, and we will have a meeting sometime in the coming month to work out the remainder of the capitation issues. But all of the other PIHPs did agree that there are still some outstanding issues that need to be remedied. So that's kind of where it's at, and that's really what I'm holding up the amendment on. So ideally, I would have done an amendment by now, but I would like to have this as solid as possible before we do that. So that's really where the holdup is at this time.
Any questions for Anya? I apologize. I was just given the public comment list, and there are three people that would like to make comments. So... Move one step back for public comment. There are three people. Is there anyone that would like to make public comment at this time? Next item on the agenda is the building update. Patrick?
Good afternoon. The building update for... It's a majority of the information is provided in the packet and your cover letter, and so I just wanted to go through some of the items that changed from last month's update to this week. We recently, we have two potential tenants that's interested, and we're close to signing leases with... We received confirmation... First of all, we want to start with the RFP information. I'm going to start there first to give you an update on the building RFP. We received interest from five firms for the RFP. We received, actually, there were no questions that none of them had. And then also, the bids were due today. They were due Friday, actually, and we received them today. We only had three realtors that were interested in marketing our property. I don't know if I'm at liberty to speak on what three they are, because it is a closed bid process, so... But we did have three potential bidders. The review committee will convene, and we'll sort through our... Within a month, we'll be able to go through and determine which of the vendors would be awarded the contract. We've had progress in the last month since the last time we met and last time we talked. There has been a lot of progress. We had some follow-up walkthroughs from a company that was interested in 5,000 to 7,000 square feet of property. They liked, there were several things they liked about our building. I don't know if I'm able to talk about the name of the company that's interested. If it's okay to mention them, I will. But... No, there's not.
Your backup at the public doesn't get that summary sheet, and typically, until we have a signed lease, we don't publicly announce who the vendor is just because sometimes they haven't announced it to their staff yet, so that's how we've handled it historically.
One, the main vendor that's potentially interested, they are looking at 5,000 to 7,000 square feet. They walked through on January 7th, again on January 23rd, and a third time on February 4th. Since then, we've done space planning for that entity, and I believe it's a copy of the space planning in your packet. Currently located in Livonia, and they're looking, this to be a second location for them. From what I understand, they want this to be the larger location and the other Livonia site will be their satellite. The other entity was, they're waiting for space planning and pricing. They're looking to move in in October with the realtor to proceed with contracts on both of these potential tenants. The first entity I mentioned, they were looking to move in in July, and the second one is interested in moving in in October. They're looking at six, roughly 6,000 to 7,000 square feet as well. Also, there's another entity that's interested in just leasing out parking spaces and to shuttle their staff to their building not far from here, but they're looking to, and they asked us if it was, we were interested in leasing out maybe 25 parking spaces toward the back of our lot, and that's something that we wanted to bring to our leadership just to make sure that, because we got plenty of them, so I don't think there's been an issue with leasing out some of the space for them to shuttle their employees to their office. So there were no additional tenants to report on at this time. I believe your packet may show that there were several other entities who had previously walked through, but there was no follow-up update on those at this time. One of the potential tenants just recently purchased the fifth floor on another building not far from here. There's no update on the capital improvements at this time. There's no items to report for capital improvement. That's all I have for the building update. Also, I want to mention that we did remove the signage out front, and we put OC, a new exterior sign was installed with OCHN's name and phone contact number for leasing opportunities. And also, we're planning to put a digital signage on our vision board in the lobby to notify visitors that there is space available for lease in this building. And that's our update for today.
So if I can ask either you, Anya, or Patrick times that somebody that's quite interested, by the real estate agent, and if so...
Industry standard is whichever organization shows them the property really is the one that actually gets the commission out of it. So it will, should those two particular vendors end up signing a lease, it would be with our previous broker. If any new people come now that we've officially RFP'd, then we would have to decide, do we want to wait till we have an RFP and an organization assigned so that they can then show it under the new agreement or how we want to handle that? But typically, whomever shows the building as our broker at the time would be the one to get the commission. Doing, yes, correct. Yep.
Last time we had a discussion on this, we were going to look into any legal issues with breaking the, I shouldn't say breaking the contract, but ending with Friedman. Were there any time constraints that we had to give them a certain amount of time notice to...
Actually, I'll let Patrick answer. He did look into that.
So we notified them. Once we told them that we were sending it out for RFP, they know it was industry standard for them to immediately remove their sign. We didn't have to tell them. They just, two days later, removed the sign because that was standard protocol and procedure for them. And they were okay with it. We bid out our operations. We bid out our, you know, all of our contracts every so often, so it was a good conversation, and they're on board, and they, you know.
Item C. QA PIHP fiscal year 20 report.
Okay, we're here to, this is better. We're here to talk about the Quality Assessment Performance Improvement Plan and our year-end report. You receive both these documents in your board packet. The packets, what we're going to do tonight is walk through both documents and to give you a high-level overview of the contents. The QIHP program description itself is really a static document. It doesn't really change from year to year. It basically can be thought of as the building blocks of a quality program. It has the pillars of what a quality program is supposed to look like. It has all of our QI committee structures, and it describes what each committee does. So you can kind of think of it as a building. A building has, like this building, for instance, we have five floors. Nothing's going to change from this year to next year in regards to the floors, but what happens inside the building may change annually. So you can think of the QIHP in that way. The, I mentioned how the committees remain in place from year to year, but what actually changes would be the outputs from each of the committees. And that's what you would see in the year-end report. So our talk tonight is going to provide you with an overview of our QI program. And you'll see that we use the, in the document, we use the QIHP and Quality Improvement Program Description. Those terms are used interchangeably. They mean the same. So Dr. Rosen, Dr. Lawson, and myself, we will be walking you through the content of those documents, and then we're going to provide a high-level overview of some of the accomplishments of each of the committees, and then we'll answer any of your questions. At next week's board meeting, we will again be on the agenda. At that time, we would be asking for approval of the QIHP. What is the QIHP and why is it required? It's a document that all PIHPs are required to have in place. The required content is handed down to the state from CMS, and it provides the assurances to persons served of the minimum components that have to be met within a program. You can always go beyond, but the QIHP has the QIHP standards, which is a section in our contract, has the minimum components that we have to have in place. Our next slide is speaking about what exactly is required of the board. The board is, as the governing authority, the board is responsible for approving the QIHP and receiving periodic reports on the operations of the QIHP. So some examples of periodic reports that the board has received throughout the year. Staff have come to the board to present on activity from the Integrated Healthcare Committee, the use of Care Connect 360, our coordination with health plans, our Sentinel Event Review Committee. Staff have come to present on our Zero Suicide Initiatives, complex case management, and we present on the performance indicators on a quarterly basis. So all of this activity aligns with all the quality committees, and it also aligns with our strategic plan. Well, I mentioned that the QIHP is the foundation of our QI program, and it has the minimum components of what the program should actually be addressing. So in the QIHP program description, I want to just point your attention to a couple of sections in this document. On page six of the QIHP program description, that's the smaller of the documents. This one is probably a little more than 25 pages. On page six, you'll find information about the governing authority, the board members, what the board member responsibilities are in terms of promoting quality. Moving on to page seven. At the bottom of page seven, you'll see that the board delegates direct quality oversight of all QI functions to the QI council. We'll be talking about the QI council a little bit later in our talk here. The Quality Council is responsible and has oversight of all the quality improvement committees within OCHN. Starting on page eight, you'll see the organizational charts that demonstrate the staff components that contribute to quality. The first set of graphs speak to and display the executive leadership. That's on page eight. On page nine, you, we have an org chart there that speaks to service leadership within the organization. On page 11, this diagram is a diagram of our QI structure. So you can see that the QI council, the board, of course, is the overseer of all the quality activity, followed by the QI council. The QI council informs the QIHP, which is what we are speaking on tonight. And then beneath the Quality Council, you'll see all the different quality committees. We're going to speak more about the quality committees a little later. Moving on to page 15 of this document, there's a description of all the teams within OCHN and more detail and background on how each team contributes to quality. So you'll see the executive director, CEO. You'll see the deputy director, CFO, CIO. There's a description of the functions of each of those staff. And then on page 16, it starts with service delivery leadership and a description of the deliverables of all the specific staff. On page, and then that goes on for a bit. We'll move on to page 25. Page 25 talks about the safety of persons served. So NCQA requires that your quality program address four specific areas. It's quality and safety of persons served, quality of care, and member experience, I believe. So we're going to talk about all those. So you'll see how each of the committees that we have align with each of those areas that we have to respond to and ensure that are in place. On page 25, we speak about the safety of persons served and the committees that we have in place to address the safety of persons served. So we have our credentialing committee. We have quality of care review processes that are described here. We have processes on transitions of care, and then our risk review activities, and then activities that address persons that are vulnerable. On page 27 of this document, we begin to speak about how we serve the needs of persons with complex needs. So our ACT teams are described here. We describe our complex case management program, and then we also describe the outcomes improvement committee. And Dr. Rosen's going to speak a little bit about that when we get to that point. Then starting on page 35 of this document is where we get into the specific staff within each of those service delivery areas. So we have the clinical staff listed here. We have quality staff listed on page 36. We have service network staff. We have staff from our Justice and SUD team. And that is the end of that. But the purpose of my walking you through that was to share with you and to explain how this is the foundation that doesn't change from year to year. So that's not going to change. This, the same document, we would probably present to you next year. We tweak it if there are any major changes, but this is the structure that, the foundation is always going to be in place. What does change is the outcomes of the committees. The next slide, please. So I mentioned how the QIHP is supported by federal regulations and is required by the state, and it was heavily scrutinized when we went through our NCQA review. And it's also evaluated annually by the external quality review organization. So we have lots of eyes that actually take a look at both these documents to make sure all the elements are met. The next slide speaks to the different components that have to be met to comply with NCQA requirements. So that's the quality of clinical care, safety of clinical care, quality of services, and member experiences. If you look at the year-end report, you will see on our table of contents where each of those committees fall into each of those four areas. So in regards to quality and safety of clinical care, we have the QI council risk committee, our improving practices leadership team, the integrated healthcare committee, Sentinel Event Review Committee, the medical directors advisory group, and our utilization management committee. Under member experience, we have the community evaluation and education committee, the citizens advisory committee, and then our member experience and satisfaction survey processes. Under quality of service, we have credentialing and privileging committee and our quality improvement committees. The QIHP program description describes what each of those committees do. I'm going to give you a little more information on some of the membership on each of those committees now on the next slide. On the improving practices leadership team, that's all the way over to my left and probably some of your right. That, membership on that committee consists of clinical management from the provider network and a management staff here, and clinical staff here at OCHN. On the integrated healthcare network, these, membership of this committee consists of staff that are tasked with implementing strategies to integrate care. The next box is our Sentinel Event Review Committee. Dr. Rosen chairs that committee, and Dr. Rosen will be speaking a little bit about that. Credentialing committee consists of provider and OCHN staff. The charge of that committee is to ensure that staff providing services to persons in the network are qualified, they are sanctioned free, and they're delivering a good quality service. The next box is our utilization management committee. That committee consists of OCHN clinical staff. Responsibilities are development of clinical protocols and performing protocol reviews, and Dr. Lawson's going to speak about that. We have our quality improvement committee. Membership on that committee consists of provider network staff that are responsible for quality. And then we have our citizens advisory committee, which is, the membership consists of persons served and family members. And then underneath the citizens advisory committee is the community education and evaluation committee, and that's a group consisting of primary persons that receive services. The next slide talks about the content of our year-end report. The year-end report describes major accomplishments of each committee. It talks to barriers to achieving outcomes that were set about at the beginning of the year, and it speaks to any interventions that are being recommended for overcoming some of the issues and barriers and their overall effectiveness of the plan. Our year-end report is published on our website, and the directions to finding that on our website, that is shown on the last bullet there. So this report, once reviewed and approved by the board, would also be on our website. At this point, we are going to speak on some of the highlights and accomplishments from each of the committees. Dr. Rosen, we'll start with you.
Well, let me begin by thanking you, the board, for giving us time to talk with you. You know, we do a lot of wonderful things here. As you can see, just a few minutes here of what we've been talking about. But sometimes I come home late in the day and very excited about what we've been doing here and want to tell my wife about it, but she gets tired of it. But I know that you're not going to get tired about it, that you're really interested in hearing what we have to say. So the, I'm going to be talking about our Quality Improvement Council, our Sentinel Event Review Process, our medical directors advisory group, and finally, some comments about our Outcomes Improvement Committee. So let's start by talking about our Risk Quality Improvement Council. This committee meets quarterly on an as-needed basis. We also have a Network Quality Improvement Committee, which meets every other month and which includes representatives from our core provider agencies. Now, these committees provide direction and oversight on all quality improvement activities in order to ensure that the people we serve are provided with appropriate supports and services, and in addition, that we're meeting the requirements of the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services as well as NCQA, our accrediting agency. So the quality measures we put in place last year included a number of HEATIS measures regarding adherence to psychiatric medication. And as a physician, as a psychiatrist, these quality measures are of great importance to me because numerous studies have shown that people with serious emotional disorders and substance use disorders who are adherent to medication have a much better outcome and a greater chance for recovery, provided they're maintaining... a greater chance for recovery, provided they're maintained on appropriate medicines and that they stay on the medicines long enough for them to work. So the quality measures we have in place look at whether people with a diagnosis of schizophrenia are receiving antipsychotic or neuroleptic medication, and whether people on antidepressant medications are maintained on these medicines for an adequate period of time. Now, what's unique about psychiatric medication is that unlike medicine like aspirin, so if you have a toothache or a headache and you take some aspirin, within a very short period of time, hopefully within an hour or two, there's some relief of pain. But many of our psychiatric medicines take weeks and sometimes months to know whether they're really going to work. So it's a, it's a major issue to motivate people to stay on their medicines. One of the quality measures mandated by the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services is length of time between discharge from the hospital and the first outpatient mental health visit. As you know, transitions are very difficult for all of us, but this transitional time between leaving the hospital and getting outpatient help is crucial because if it doesn't happen, the likelihood of relapse and rehospitalization is very high. Another quality monitor mandated by NCQA, as well as the state of Michigan, is integrated care. We know that people with serious mental illness and substance use disorders have a high incidence of comorbid physical illness. So it is extremely important that in addition to managing any behavioral disorders they may have, that we pay attention to physical health issues. At that end, we have an Integrated Care Committee that, that meets with on our community health, a federally qualified primary care clinic that we helped establish several years ago. We meet on a quarterly basis to discuss clinical issues and the people we serve. Many of the people they see are our people and vice versa. In addition, we help them develop policies and procedures to assist their primary care physicians in diagnosing and treating both mental illness and substance use disorders and talk about the procedures for referring people to us from their clinics when people have serious mental illness or substance use disorders. Also, in our efforts to enhance integrated care, our complex case nurses meet monthly with the, with all of the Medicaid health plans in Oakland County to discuss at-risk people who are being seen in common with our core provider agencies. Another important activity is our Sentinel Event Review Process. The Sentinel Event Review Committee meets weekly. Participants include me as medical director, Vicky Suter, our recipient rights director, as well as a team of, our team of quality analysts. And the purpose of this committee is to collect and review sentinel events and to require a root cause analysis when reportable events are deemed to be sentinel. Some of these critical events include, or risk events include emergency medical treatment due to self-injury, harm to others resulting in hospitalization, arrests, medication errors, and hospitalization for injury from physical management. The Sentinel Event Review Committee then decides whether these critical incidents rise to the level of a sentinel event, at which time we request a root cause analysis from the core provider agency. Let's talk about another important committee, which I chair, the Medical Directors Advisory Committee. We meet monthly. Members of this committee include all of the medical directors of our core provider agencies, as well as our quality analysts here. And the purpose of this committee is to ensure that evidence-based standards are met by our provider network. The committee ensures that prescribing practices are evidence-based, and to this end, we develop and update policies and procedures for the prescribing of psychiatric medications. We also invite experts to attend our meetings and provide in-services to inform all of our prescribers about the latest developments in psychopharmacology. And on a quarterly basis, we meet with the medical directors of our sister counties, Detroit, Wayne, and Macomb County. Let me conclude by saying a few words about the Outcomes Improvement Committee. Let me tell you a little bit of history about this committee. Several years ago, when I came on board, one of my first assignments was to sit on the Sentinel Event Review Committee. And I remember how emotional this was because events were being reported to us, but sometimes those events were deaths. And, you know, when an 85-year-old or a 95-year-old person dies, it is a sad event to family, loved ones, friends, but it's not a sentinel event because death is a, you know, a natural part of the life cycle. But all too often, the deaths were people who were 48, or 29, or 14. And when we would review the clinical record, we would see that there were holes in the treatment. There were things missing, and that if those things could have been provided in a timely way, those people could have lived a more normal lifespan. So what we decided to do is to identify at-risk people, that is, people who are being hospitalized multiple times, people who are ending up in emergency rooms, people who are being arrested, people who are homeless, people who weren't keeping appointments in their clinics. And we asked clinicians from our core provider agencies to meet with us here on a regular basis, and we've been meeting on the first and Thursday of every month for two hours, where we discuss these at-risk people, trying to come up with better diagnoses, better understanding of what's happening, and trying to put in place supports and services that can make a difference. Now, we didn't know whether this process was really going to help, but we had to track it to see. And so what we did was to look at what happened to people for the six months before they were presented to us, and then to look at how they were doing six months after they were presented to us. And what we found very gratifyingly is that we were making a difference in the quality of life of these people, not all, but many. One of the things that we were able to easily measure was hospitalization rates. And what we found out, and this has been a consistent finding over several years now, is that people presented to our committee are hospitalized much less often, 70 to 80% times less often, which is a reflection of certainly improved recovery, but also, we know that hospitalization is the most expensive service we provide. And so we are saving an enormous amount of money to the system, which then can be used to help us reach out to people in need. So the, what was wonderful this last year is we were able to put together a summary of what we were doing and submitted it to a National Journal of the American Psychiatric Association and actually published it. So we've gotten some nice comments from people who are really impressed with what they're doing and who are now talking about trying to do what we've been doing in their places. Now, we've added a new dimension to our Quality Improvement Committee, and that is to look at people in state hospitals and to see if presenting them to us might enable them to be discharged sooner. Because too often, once a person ends up in an institution like a state hospital, they end up staying not only months, but years. And we have been able, because of this effort, to get people back into the community. So again, very rewarding. So I want to thank the clinicians from our core providers, as well as the people here who've spent many hours dealing with very challenging situations. And it's just very gratifying when you can see good things happening for the people we serve. So let me stop at this point and turn it over to Nicole.
Good evening. I'm going to review some of the accomplishments from the Improving Practices Leadership Team, which Marquita had noted is attended by the clinical leadership around our core provider network, as well as people we support who graciously agree to come and meet with us quarterly and provide input, and was formerly chaired by me in my role as clinical director. So I'll direct your attention to the FY19 report on page 11. I'm certainly not going to read all of this to you, but we'll just highlight a couple of things. So part of what the Improving Practices Leadership Team does is maintain all of the clinical protocols and best practices. So this outlines process and practice that we expect all of our providers to uniformly apply across the network to ensure best practice and service delivery. So we update those every year in collaboration and partnership with the folks that we support, as well as our provider network, simply to make sure that we are on top of current research and that we are always promoting what research says is the best practice to get the best possible lives for the folks that we support. One of the highlights that I would say from last year along these lines was completion of the clinical pathway for suicide care. And this was part of our zero-suicide effort. It's a very specific pathway that a person agrees to be on when they are at high risk for suicide, which includes increased outreach, increased visits, increased services, until such a time as that person feels that they are safe, supported, and can decrease those levels of service. That was two years in the making of research and collaboration and working closely with our provider network. And we are very happy to say that as part of that, as well as the other initiatives that we had rolled out with our Youth Suicide Prevention Grant, which we did in partnership with the Oakland County Health Division, we just recently learned that youth suicides had dropped from 22 in 2018 to 12 in 2019. So certainly, one suicide is too many. We stand by that, and will continue to our zero-suicide initiative, but we are having an impact, which is much-needed news as you go forward in that type of difficult work. Another area that the Improving Practices Leadership Team focuses in on is evidence-based practices. And so those are very specific, peer-reviewed, scientific interventions or therapy practices for individuals who may have certain diagnoses or have certain problem areas that they're struggling with, that evidence would suggest if you do treatment in this way, this way, this way, that the person will have at least a reduction of symptoms, if not, start to move into recovery. One of the big issues, or I'm sorry, one of the big efforts that we made in fiscal year 19 was to reinvigorate our dialectical behavioral treatment, or DBT, evidence-based practice, which is specific for people who are struggling with self-harming behaviors. And so we hosted a training here, not only to reinvigorate this in our adult networks, but we were among the first to move forward with a youth team. And so both of our SED core providers, Easter Sales Michigan and Oakland Family Services, had teams that attended the training and got additional training in how to apply this evidence-based practice for youth. So we were able to capitalize on our last year of grant funding for that as well. We move then on into page 14. I just wanted to highlight for one moment because this has been on several plans, including our annual and strategic plan for a couple iterations, and that is the Person and Family Centered Planning Training. We had started doing some things here ourselves. The department, MDHHS, had come in and said, "We really want to roll something out." So we stopped and participated on some of their committees. And really, the end product for that was geared very specifically to adults with mental illness or people with substance use disorder. And we have a value and belief here that good person-centered planning should look the same no matter what your diagnosis is, no matter what network you receive services in. And so we've kind of gone back to the drawing board for this fiscal year. So you'll kind of note that the plan and the results from FY19 are not nearly where we wanted to be. But Tricia Zizumbo has taken the lead on this with a training, and we'll be working closely with Stephanie Wilson, the new clinical director, in order to really develop something that I hope we can all be proud of. And so we have representatives from all of our core providers that are going to participate, but we have people served and advocates that we will be reaching out to, not only to survey for needs, but to look to participate on this committee. And our goal in this committee is that we have less professional people around the table than we do people receiving services and their families, to really help guide and develop this curriculum into FY20. So just kind of wanted to put a note on that because I'm sure you've seen it for several years now and wanted to let you know that we haven't lost our passion or drive for that. We simply had to rework it with a couple of stops and starts. So those are the highlights from the IPLT, and I'll turn it over to Marquita to round us out.
Okay, I'm going to speak about the last two bullets on this slide, the member experience, satisfaction, and quality improvement, individual person-centered plan audits, and HCVS. If you would turn to page 31 of the year-end report, this is where we discuss member experience and satisfaction. There are several satisfaction surveys that we administer to persons served. We administer the RE, which stands for Recovery and Enhancing Environment. We administer the ECO, which is an NCQA-required survey, which stands for Experience of Care and Health Outcomes. And then we also take all of that information and aggregate the information from the surveys and other input that is received from people that we serve into a member experience report. We are going to be presenting to the board on all these satisfaction, member experience, and data gathering activities in the very near future. But in this report, starting on page 31, you can get a high-level overview of activity that has happened in this area in fiscal year 19. Fiscal year 19 was the first full year of OCHN administering the ECO, and feedback that we got from persons served showed some areas where we need to work on in terms of improving the experience that persons have while they are receiving services. One area where improvement is needed is persons were asked, are they informed about medication side effects? That survey response has dropped a little bit from comparison to fiscal year 18. Fiscal year 18, we had a smaller sample, but that has, you know, no reflection on the data outcomes. But that's an area that we are going to have to work on for improvement. A positive note is that people responded that more information was given about their rights in fiscal year 19, and in fiscal year 19, people rated that they were helped more by their services and that their overall mental health was better. However, there are several areas that we are going to focus on, and we are going to have to do some, a little bit more digging to find out what the barriers are and what we can do to actually impact satisfaction of persons served more. Also, in the member experience section, we speak a little bit about the Provider Directory on page 35 of this report. The Provider Directory was introduced fiscal year 19. One of the data points that we can now get from the Provider Directory is language is spoken by persons that are actually providing services in the network. So this table that's here actually is data that comes straight from our provider network, core providers that actually speak various languages. So this is a good resource, resource for persons served and families if they are looking for a service provider that can communicate with them in a specific language. I'm also going to talk about the last bullet, the Quality Improvement Initiatives, the IPOs audits. In fiscal year 19, we saw an improvement in the outcomes in the IPOs audit. That's on page 24 of your year-end report. In comparison to FY19 outcomes, we saw a nine percentage point increase in FY, in comparison to FY17, we saw a nine percentage point increase in FY19. So that came about as a direct result of OCHN staff and provider staff meeting together and discussing corrective action plans and what specifically could be done to improve in this area. In regards to HCVS, an update for you, in regards to CE waiver, 250 people in residential sites and 503 people in non-residential sites completed corrective action plan work. And as of the end of FY19, all corrective action plan work was completed for those. For the B waiver services, 72% of caps were approved. And we've just recently had the state out here to complete hidden scrutiny reviews with any of the providers that were identified to be in hidden scrutiny review, in hidden scrutiny. These are providers where their survey responses indicated that they were not going to be able to come into compliance with the HCVS standards. The staff from the state were out here almost the entire month of January. They were interviewing persons and conducting onsite visits at residential sites and vocational centers. No feedback was given to us specifically regarding the, what their findings were, but staff from OCHN were there to accompany the state staff on all these reviews. staff from OCHN were there to accompany the state staff on all of these reviews. Next slide brings us to the end of our overview. As I mentioned, at the board meeting next week, we would be basically presenting the same PowerPoint and just going over some of the high-level points and asking if you had any additional questions, and we would be asking for approval of the QUAPP at that time. So we can answer any questions that you have at this time.
Dr. Rosen, I apologize for being late. It's my usual work schedule. So I missed some of it, but I did hear some of the things that always interest me, and I appreciate all the work you guys do to putting this together. Dr. Rosen, you mentioned about HEATIS and NCQA measures. I know from all of my life of doing this work that those are all data-driven. So how do we track all of the persons that are on medications that are prescribed under our care, either whether it's prescribed or administered, so that you can either track either how evidence-based practices were being used, or we can see how their outcomes and results are either getting better, or staying the same, or declining? Because that's what I know the HEATIS measure is looking at.
One of the things that helps us know whether people are on their medicines or whether they're filling their prescription, so we know if someone is filling a prescription using their Medicaid card, there's a record of it, and we can, we can check that and know. And when people are prescribed new medications, of course, there has to be documentation. So there has to be a consent form, informed consent. So someone needs to know why they're taking the medicine, what the side effects are, and they sign that document. So there's a record in the clinical record demonstrating that someone's taking the medicine or that it's certainly been prescribed, but then we, we review whether that, you know, the prescription was filled. And in particular, when we see outcomes aren't good, then we delve more deeply into what's going on to try and find out.
I can add just a little bit to that as well. Our HEATIS measures are folded into a software tool that we have purchased using grant funds. So some of you may have heard of PROACT before, formerly from Care Management Technologies, is currently owned by a company called Reliaus Learning. We take the data download that we get from MDHHS of all adjudicated Medicaid claims, referred to as the Care Connectors CC360 dataset. We feed it into that tool, and so all of the claims for prescriptions run through there, and it's already set up for those HEATIS measures. So we can actually run to see who's out of compliance with the prescriptions, who's within compliance, as well as specific prescribers who are prescribing out of compliance along with that.
So that covers us for the scripts filled, the stuff that comes from Care Connect. Okay, thanks.
I had a couple of questions. When you were talking about, Dr. Rosen, thank you for the presentation. It was, it was, I thought it was easier to follow this year, so I appreciate the format that you did it in. I thought about it when you were talking about medication compliance, and I'm wondering, has anything been done to address side effects to medications? Because I know personally, that's one reason why some people don't, you know, comply with medication because of the side effects, or have issues with it because of the side effects. So are we doing anything around that?
You know, some very basic things, reminding prescribers, physicians, physician assistants, nurse practitioners, what the important side, what the common side effects of the medicines they're prescribing are, and that we require that when medications are prescribed, that certain tests need to be obtained. So for example, we know that many of the medicines we prescribe can increase blood sugar. So we expect that hemoglobin A1C or blood glucose levels be recorded initially or as indicated during the course of the year. So as we, and also as we learn about new side effects, so we don't always know what the side effects are, because there's so many new medicines coming out, and as we learn about those side effects, we make sure that our medical directors of our core provider agencies know what those are, so that they can pass the information on to the prescribers at their, at their agencies.
Another question I had is, are we doing anything around alternative treatments and therapies? I know medication is like the first line of defense, but there's other things that can be done. Sometimes exercise does the same thing as medications. Are we looking at alternatives?
So, so when somebody is diagnosed with a serious mental illness or with a substance use disorder, very often, medication is recommended, but medication alone is not adequate treatment. There always, always has to be psychosocial interventions, and there's a whole array of what those might be, from DBT to meditation to exercise. So there's a whole array of possible treatments that go along with or are in addition to medication.
That's not something that would be reflected in these reports, because I don't hear a whole lot about, I hear about medication, medication more than I hear anything else, which is what prompted my question.
Sure. So some of the efforts that we've had around that have really focused on our Adult Mental Health Block grant, simply because we, with the exercise and the different alternative therapies, some of them are not Medicaid-reimbursed. So one of the things that MDHHS has done is allotted us $5,000 for every drop-in center for health and wellness goals. And so we've been working very closely with our drop-in centers to make the most use out of that money and to write plans. And so some of the drop-in centers had walking groups, some of them had nutrition groups come in, pool tables, so alternatives like that to promote just togetherness and inclusion, as well as some healthy behaviors. In addition, in our Substance Use Disorder Network, because we have the PA2 funds and the block grant, which are slightly less restrictive than Medicaid funds, we are able to pay for things like acupuncture and yoga that have been shown to assist a person with SUD through recovery. Unfortunately, we haven't been able to expand that through to the rest of our service networks.
When you talk about quality of service and recovery, I'm just thinking that those are other issues that would be nice to hear about, and not just the medication all the time.
Truly noted, thank you.
And one other thing, does anybody know how many Medicaid health plans are in Oakland County?
Yes, there are eight.
I want to mention motivational interviewing, which is an important part of the relationship we have with the people we serve, because a major issue is very often an individual either denying that they have an issue or they don't want treatment that we think might be helpful. So how do you help someone understand that, that taking this medicine or being involved in regular therapy sessions will make a difference in your life? And so all of the clinicians are trained in motivational interviewing, which is a really important strategy in improving outcomes.
Ms. Pierce.
Thank you.
It's me. The presentation was really, I think, well-planned and well-delivered. I got a lot from your presentation and, you know, plugging in some of the words that are in our documents. So I appreciate whatever thought went into the format. It really did make a difference. It made this information so much more manageable, so I appreciate that. I do have a comment about the fresh eyes on the person-centered planning initiative, and much-needed, no two ways around it. And I really do appreciate the fact that there will be more people who are experiencing the outcomes of planning, be they positive or where work maybe remains. And I was just wondering if at the table you were also thinking about having people who do independent facilitation for person-centered plans, so that they can also experience the, hearing what other people have to say when they've had their own planning process, either be terrific or maybe needed a little bit more attention.
Have them necessarily on the list. We are trying to keep a manageable group, because we do have our eyes on 9/30/2020 to have this curriculum developed, simply because we want to roll this out in the next fiscal year. But certainly something for us to, to take under consideration, to add those folks into that planning group.
I think it can be quite an important component to a successful person-centered plan, so I hope you would consider the addition of people who, who do provide that, because if people aren't getting the message, then they can't really be the facilitator people need.
I also thought this was very helpful and informative tonight. Just one quick question on the Outcomes Improvement Committee. It sounds like it has great success, so it was intriguing to me. Are you able, or are the folks that are on that committee able to take that information back to help others that aren't necessarily brought to the committee? Because I would presume you have a lot of folks that are brought up to the committee, but yet could probably help them anymore.
In the process of discussing very challenging situations, we're all learning, including the clinicians that sit around the table with us. We're all learning, and they take that knowledge back and are able to use it in the other people they're, they're working with. So it's, it's, it's a wonderful learning experience. My concern when we developed this Outcomes Improvement Committee was that, that people wouldn't show up, that they have to leave their clinics and spend a couple of hours every other week with us. The amazing thing is that we have never missed a meeting. We've always had many people show up from our core providers, because they value the experience of being able to share with a group of people the challenges they face, because you can imagine how frustrating and demoralizing it can be when somebody you're trying to help isn't getting better. And you're, you're a frontline person, wondering, what else can I do? So what's wonderful about this committee is we have a chance to talk about that, and we learn from each other.
Did we get NCQA accreditation? Did I miss something?
We are, we went through our initial survey, and as a result of that initial survey, we, because it was our first survey, we were granted a provisional, because there were some areas that we weren't quite where we needed to be. So we will be going back through the survey process this year, June 29th and 30th. NCQA will be here onsite, and we have to submit a plan for the items that we didn't quite make the bar on May 12th. So as a result of that, we hope to be fully accredited after that.
I have two quick, well, I don't know if they're quick questions. One's to Nicole. So I understand we're, we've been doing this surveying for folks, and this year you said the numbers went down a little bit in terms of the responses, or it was one of you two that said...
Satisfaction surveys?
The satisf, I think it's just the satisfaction, but I know we survey for a lot of different things, so it's hard to keep track of which surveys these are. And I know we've just recently put a survey out on our, our website, so people can, I don't want to say it insensitively, they can vote often, I guess, or survey more times than just annually? Is that, is that correct? Would that help us with our data points?
What we spoke about in this document was the RE, the ECO, and the member experience survey. I am not, I'm not sure about which survey is out on our website right now collecting information, but if that's something that can contribute to the member experience report, we will need to take a look at it.
Just seems that if we only do it one time a year, we don't possibly get their perspective, people we serve, their perspectives throughout the year, to see if that helps improve what they need and how well we do it.
As you mentioned, we have lots of data points where we collect survey information from people. The goal of the member experience report is to pull it all together, to basically say, this is what we have, this is what we're going to do with it, this is what we found, and this is how we're going to use it to improve, improve services.
The question I have is for Dr. Rosen. About a year or two ago, you were, you were touting some studies on genomic-based medications and their potential success, and how we can, if we, if we know what's in a person's DNA, we, we know what's the right drug to start using. Can, I know it's outside of this, but I wonder if one day down the road here, we can have a little bit more insight into what, unless it is part of this, where that is, and are there more improvements to that, and are there now medications in Medicaid's formulary that fit those?
Genetic information is, is becoming an important part of treatment in all of medicine. We're still in a learning phase of how it applies to people with mental illness, but we know for sure that genetics plays a role in mental illness. So does environment. It's a combination of both. But what's complicated about the major psychiatric illnesses is that it's not one gene. So if somebody has cystic fibrosis, there is a defective gene, and there's research now going on to correct that gene. But for example, in the case of an illness like schizophrenia, it's probably multiple genes. So eventually, we're going to figure it out. We just don't know yet, but there's a tremendous amount of research going on, and every major university and pharmaceutical companies are very interested in this, because if they're able to develop a medicine that's effective, it's going to be a bestseller.
Very much. And, Trina, what is the RE and what is the ECO?
The RE is the Recovery Enhancing Environment. It's a survey that is administered to persons served to determine how well staff are promoting a person's recovery, how are they assisting. So it evaluates staff, more so than a person's level of satisfaction. But they, that impacts a person's satisfaction if a staff person isn't really encouraging. The other survey is the, I have to look up the acronym, Experience of Care and Health Outcomes. That's an NCQA-required survey. It's relatively new for us, but it's a satisfaction survey that really digs a lot deeper than your typical questions. It asks specific questions about clinical care. So we are going to be presenting, asking for some agenda time on an upcoming board meeting, to give you an overview of all these different satisfaction surveys, and the member experience report, that is also an NCQA-required document.
Malchaya, that was a great question, and thank you to all of you for the wonderful questions that you ask others. As you can see, the board is very interested in... It's Marquita. Okay, can't be right all the time. Presentation is from Adam Hamilton.
Good evening. Yeah. I was asked to present to you today about the use of the DLA-20 assessment tool within our specialized residential network. So I'll just be sharing some information, hopefully answering some of your questions about that tonight. Just for context, I'll share that specialized residential refers to a set of services that are provided in adult foster care settings that have a special certification on their license that allows them to provide some Medicaid-covered services in those settings. Probably works, it's just me. No problem, sorry. Do I need to repeat anything? Okay. So I was saying, just for context, specialized residential refers to a set of services that are provided in adult foster care homes, where a special certification is on the license of those homes that allows... of those homes that allows providers to provide Medicaid-funded services in those settings. So, and then I'm going to talk to you a little bit about some of the things that we've done, particularly around the use of the DLA-20 assessment tool, as OCHN has taken direct contracting for the specialized residential providers back under our purview. DLA-20 stands for Daily Living Activities 20, and what it is, is a brief assessment tool that is research-backed, and it is administered by supports coordinators and case managers. It looks at 20 different daily living activities, and it evaluates a person's functioning across those 20 daily living activities. It is essentially a 30-day snapshot of a person's functioning. There are certainly a lot of assessments done across our provider network. Some people have inquired as to why this additional assessment is useful to us. We think about things like the CIS, the LOCUS, other assessments that are done by supports coordinators, case managers, and other trained professionals in the network. And I think the reason that DLA-20 is a bit different is that it does really take that quick 30-day snapshot. It looks back over the past 30 days and really attempts, a good administration of it will really actually show where a person is going to need supports and services and where a person may have some strengths, where their functioning represents strengths that they have. As opposed to, say, for example, CIS, which is administered every three years, it's a three-hour assessment as opposed to a more brief, like 15 to 30-minute assessment like DLA-20. Both have utility in terms of treatment planning, things like that. However, what DLA-20 does is, because it's briefer, because it can be administered without so much time involved in it, it really gives supports coordinators and case managers the flexibility to readminister as it's needed to. So as needs change, you know, it can be very useful. And I'm going to say a lot more about DLA-20 coming up here. So DLA-20 is administered by supports coordinators and case managers, like I mentioned. Adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities and adults with mental illness across the entire network will have DLA-20 done in collaboration with their paid and unpaid supports. Again, this is a useful tool. It identifies areas where a person may need support, where a person may, in the past 30 days, show that they need support to meet certain needs that they have. For individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities, the DLA-20 is administered at minimum semiannually. For adults with mental illness, if an adult is in specialized residential, that assessment is done quarterly. And these timeframes really coincide with when treatment plan reviews are done. So again, it can be a very useful tool as you're looking at a person's functioning across those 20 daily living activities and trying to plan supports and services for that person. As with most assessments, if there's a significant change observed, the DLA-20, because it's a fairly brief assessment, it could be readministered at any time. And frankly, that would be something that we would encourage because we want to, when necessary, have current or up-to-date information if a change has occurred. A little bit about the history of DLA-20 within the OCHN system. Staff here at OCHN and some staff who are identified from core provider agencies were trained in November of 2015, trained in how to administer the DLA-20, but also trained in becoming trainers on DLA-20. Essentially, there still is a cadre of trainers who are meeting the training needs of the network on an ongoing basis. And this cadre of trainers includes, again, some staff here and some staff at core providers as well. In September of 2017, OCHN began requiring DLA-20 be completed for adults with mental illness who are residing in specialized residential settings and adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities who are residing in specialized residential settings. And then in August of 2018, the DLA-20 was rolled out as a requirement across the whole network for adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities and adults with mental illness. Standard training would be three to three and a half hours, and again, we are self-sustaining as a system regarding training for DLA-20 at this time. When the DLA-20 is administered by a supports coordinator or case manager, I think what the individual will experience is this being rolled into, typically this being rolled into part of a review of that individual's plan of service. So that's, again, as I mentioned previously, that's kind of why the timeframes, the minimum requirements around timeframes for administration align with those expectations. The idea is that the trained person, a supports coordinator or a case manager, can really gather information from multiple sources. This is really intended to be a collaborative process with the individual, their family, maybe paid supports who are involved in that treatment planning process. And then the process of administration will yield an outcome that shows where an individual has strengths, and again, where an individual may need supports. So this becomes very useful when we are talking about planning services, when we are talking about developing goals and objectives around areas where supports are needed. Because DLA-20 is a fairly straightforward and fairly brief tool to administer, it's useful in that we can, through repeated administrations of it, see where changes in services are needed. If an individual has had a DLA-20 completed and it's apparent that more supports or less supports are needed in an area, repeated administration of DLA-20 will indicate that. And the idea is that information can be gathered from multiple sources. It's really, again, intended to be a collaborative process, and it's the supports coordinator or the case manager who's trained in the administration and scoring of the DLA-20 who will ultimately determine the score for each daily living activity. Scores correspond to a level of support that may be indicated in that particular area. Or a score of, in the case of the DLA-20, a score of five or higher indicates that this is a strength for an individual, which is also important to know in the planning process. How we have begun using DLA-20 with specialized residential is that the outcome of the DLA-20 is matched to a level of care tier within the specialized residential level of care. We have a base, moderate, and high level of care tier within specialized residential, and the goal of this is to really bring more nuance to how we are looking at the services within the specialized residential of care. And then, of course, we can crosswalk that to a rate that providers are paid based on the service that they are providing, with the ultimate goal of really being able to consistently and appropriately fund services within specialized residential. There's been lots of questions as we've started working with specialized residential providers. There has been, you know, questions from various sources about how and why we're using DLA-20. And I think the important thing that I've repeatedly wanted to point out to people is that this is, again, intended to be a collaborative process. However, it really is that trained supports coordinator or case manager who knows how to ultimately score this tool and get a reliable outcome. Within our system, we rely heavily on supports coordinators and case managers to do this type of assessment because it really takes us out of the equation as the funder, and it takes the person who's providing the service, who will ultimately be paid for it, out of the equation, and really empowers this conflict-free, neutral party to do the assessment. The supports coordinator or case manager really has no responsibility to get involved with setting rates or anything like that at all. Really, they are just there to, in an unbiased way, score this assessment appropriately. So in summary, individuals, supports coordinators, case managers, paid and natural supports engage in completing the DLA-20. This can be very useful in informing the person-centered planning process, to develop goals and objectives, to help identify areas where supports are needed, and to plan for how these services are going to be helpful to somebody. Regarding the outcomes for people, DLA-20 can be a very useful tool for monitoring outcomes. Again, we require the DLA-20 be repeated periodically throughout the course of an individual's plan year. The outcome of the DLA-20 may indicate that they are receiving the appropriate supports and services at this time, or that adjustments may need to be made one way or the other. More supports may be necessary, or less supports may be necessary because the person is moving through recovery. I think it's also useful when we think about planning as a system. From a systemic perspective, it's really useful data to have for us and helps us to identify capacity challenges potentially, areas where we may need to look for providers who have special abilities to support people who have particularly different or challenging needs. And of course, we've seen increasingly, healthcare is really moving toward outcome-based, performance-based payment, not just in the OCHN system, but really across all of healthcare. And I expect that that will continue. So to have a tool that can be used flexibly, I think, is really an asset for the OCHN system and its providers. DLA-20 also becomes important when we start thinking about the idea of medical necessity, when we start thinking about what's asked of OCHN and its provider network in terms of compliance with Medicaid regulations. One thing that DLA-20 does very effectively is it helps support medical necessity. Medical necessity, as we define it when we're training the DLA-20, really has three key ingredients to it. An individual must have a current diagnosis. That diagnosis must be within the past year. So again, it's current. We know that this is something necessitating treatment, supports, services. And we've talked about the idea of functional impairment in the past, when we had what was called the GAF in previous versions of the Diagnostic Manual that we use. The Diagnostic Manual has kind of moved away from that now. However, we still need a reliable way to assess the level of functional impairment that somebody may be experiencing as a result of their diagnosis or diagnoses. And what DLA-20 does is it really gives us a measurable, a reliable and measurable tool to look at functional impairment. So we can develop a good support, a good basis by which to say these services are medically necessary when we look at and measure functional impairment. Included in the presentation, the Medicaid Provider Manual's definition of medical necessity. And essential here is that medically necessary services are those that help a person attain and maintain the level of functioning necessary to go out and accomplish the goals that they have. So essentially, you know, DLA-20 is really important, is an important part of helping evaluate medical necessity, really helps us align with this definition, helps us remain compliant in our obligation to make sure all authorized services are medically necessary. And this is largely new to residential providers, as OCHN directly contracting for these services is still relatively new. It's been just over a year. In September 2017, individuals who were receiving specialized residential services would have had a DLA-20 completed, though there was no mandate on the specialized residential providers to accommodate to changed rate methodology or anything like that that we've been working on over the past year. It was the individuals who they were serving had DLA-20s completed. In October of 2018, the start of FY19, when OCHN began directly contracting for those services, as you may remember, essentially what we did at first was just honor existing rates. So provider was contracted with, residential provider was contracted with a core provider, they are now contracted with OCHN. We made no adjustments to rates at that time. However, there were people who were transitioning into that level of care during FY19. There were people moving about within that level of care during FY19, and we needed to develop a methodology to determine what someone's rate was going to be, and we had the long-range goal of really doing that in a way that was consistent and appropriate to support individuals in getting all the services that they needed within that level of care. So we began working on some of the things I'm going to be talking about in a moment In early FY19, shortly after we began directly contracting for these services, we started analyzing existing DLA-20 data. And what we took from that analysis was that there are basically, you know, three tiers of service within the specialized residential level of care. I mentioned the base tier, the moderate, and the high tier. And what we then did is, while we were simultaneously developing a methodology for determining rates, was we created that methodology so that somebody's tier could be crosswalked over to a rate. So again, the idea is that it's fair, it's consistent, it's based on something measurable. Additionally, we developed rates for enhanced staffing. So if an individual needs one-to-one supports or even two-to-one supports, we have a way to consistently develop a rate for that. When individuals were coming into specialized residential, they didn't have a pre-existing rate that could be honored from before our time of direct contracting, we began applying this new methodology. When individuals who were already in specialized residential moved to a new provider, and we needed to arrive at a new rate with this new provider, we began using this methodology. Beginning of this fiscal year, well, really starting during last fiscal year in preparation for, but officially in fiscal year 20, we transitioned specialized residential providers onto our rate methodology. And there has been some, of course, challenges associated with that. However, we've really continued to work through those issues, and by and large, what we are seeing is that overall, the transition has been without a lot of major problems. What we retain the ability to do, and I think this is really very important, is if there are particular unique circumstances, if there are particular conditions where it requires a closer look, you know, the team that's working on this here has been able to collaborate with the provider. with the provider network and continue to work through some of those challenges. Includes my presentation, other than I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Excuse me. Can hear anything about wages, turnover. Also got to be two big important factors in being able to provide good service. You involved in any of that? Not you personally, but what you're analyzing.
Yeah. So when I mentioned the rate methodology that we developed and how the DLA 20, the outcome of the DLA 20 kind of gets crosswalked to a particular acuity level within the specialized residential level of care, and then that corresponds with the rate. Regarding that rate methodology, we took in, we took things into consideration, like turnover. The real driver of rate is staffing. So looking at staff wages was essential if we were going to develop a rate methodology that really worked. And having some accounting for staff turnover, overtime, to accommodate for staff turnover, that's all built into the rate methodology.
The, when I look at the business model, okay, and the model is service, service, service. I've come to be a believer in that. And it's a challenging issue to control the turnover, and that has to be an important factor, because that's what's driving that business model down. People who are going to suffer are the people we serve.
Agree.
I don't mean to, I don't mean to throw a softball question, but I don't consider that a softball question. I think it's an important concern that I know I've had for quite a while. Any questions? Yes, doctor?
You alluded to some challenges. Can you tell the top two challenges that you have come across?
Well, I think one of the challenges was, we really had to make sure that we, when we were transitioning providers from whatever rate they may have had prior to us rolling out our rate methodology and this methodology using DLA 20, many providers came to the table and said, you know, whoa, 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 we think this DLA 20 outcome, the score on this is not, is not accurate. So we had to develop a process to start reviewing some of those things and then go back and ask core providers to take a look at some of those things as well. The other one, we do have, so when we really developed this tiered system, level of care tiers within specialized residential, we knew that would account for the vast majority. However, there are still some individuals with particularly unique needs. And so we've had to kind of go back in situations where, you know, traditional approach to service delivery was not meeting those needs. You know, I'm kind of thinking of, you know, the most unique cases and really look at those things on more of a case-by-case basis.
I have a couple of questions. One, what's the origin of this? Where'd it come from?
Where did DLA 20 come from?
Yeah.
It was developed by a lady named Willa Pressmanis. She is affiliated with the National Council for Behavioral Health. And really, the inspiration for it was, there was not a reliable way to measure functional impairment. When we looked at what the previous diagnostic manual had available to clinicians within it, there was wild disparity from one clinician to the next in terms of rating and scoring. So what she essentially did was look at that problem and then develop a tool that would give clinicians a valid and reliable way to determine the degree to which a person may or may not have functional impairment.
Individuals doing the assessment are supports coordinators, they're not clinicians, right?
Well, most, the vast majority are licensed and trained, and they have to be qualified by the state's standards to provide that service.
Well, how does, what is the, I'll try not to take too much time, but what is the difference between that and IPOs, which, you know, many families spend a lot of time in IPOs, working hand-in-hand with the, you know, supports coordinator and other staff that are watching the individual? How does, how does, how do those relate? Do they, does somebody do an audit where they lie them next to each other and say, okay, is this thing working? You know, it seems like they only take 15 to 20 minutes to do it, and they only have three and a half hours of training. And to Sid's point, a lot of these supports coordinators are turning it over like rabbits, too. So, you know, I got my training, and then I quit, and then a new person came, and I got trained yesterday, and all of a sudden I do an assessment that impacts the pay that goes to a provider agency for an individual for whatever reason. How does, who does the audit? Is anybody auditing it, like, looking at it, making sure that the alignment makes sense?
Yeah. I mean, I would say it's not an audit per se. We, again, what we did find when we rolled this out initially is that some of the residential providers learned what their rate was going to be based on the level of acuity that the person's DLA 20 indicated, and they said, no, 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 we're actually providing a lot more supports than that would indicate. So we developed a process to look at some of those. One of the strengths this, that our system has regarding DLA 20 is that we are self-sustaining in terms of training and that we have actually, you know, gone back to MTM as a training organization that's associated with the National Council for Behavioral Health. And we've gotten additional consultation and training through them over the years to make sure that our cadre of trainers is really sharp and prepared to go out and train the network. And you're right, yes, I mean, turnover is certainly a challenge. And for that reason, you know, these trainings are offered regularly. There's no, you know, mandate that a person only come once. Frankly, I think I would encourage people to come periodically if I were asked, to stay sharp and to not drift from administering the tool appropriately.
Two other.
Can I answer your question about IPOs, though, too?
Oh, yeah.
Sorry, I skipped past that. I think I look at it as another source of valuable information, you know? So somebody who is trained and talented at person-centered planning process and developing goals and objectives and interventions in an IPOs is really going to be able to pull from DLA 20, just like they'd pull from CIS, just like they'd pull from probably multiple sources, and integrate that information to make sure that a plan is developed that addresses all of the identified needs. It's another valuable source of information.
Because I, I mean, I'm kind of new to the board, but I've always seen the IPOs as the Bible.
Yeah.
That's what drives everything, you know? You've got to make sure you cover everything in that. Just another thing, I, there's a lot of misunderstanding, I think, in the community. And I'm getting a lot of input from people that, from a variety of different types of special needs, by the way, on the communication part of it. But a lot of people believe that the parent, this is being done without the parents or the guardians' input. And what is music to my ears, or you confirmed that this is a collaborative effort, that the guardians are part of this discussion when they're doing a DLA evaluation. Then one last thing that goes along with that, I also understand that some of the core providers are told they cannot give copies of it to the guardians or people caring about the individual. Is that true? Are they really prevented from doing that?
I would say no. I mean, if we want to be very, if I want to be very nuanced in giving an answer, it would depend if a person is their own guardian or not, because that impacts who has access to that medical record, right? But I mean, this is an assessment that goes in the medical record. It's, you know, by law, a person is, it's a right, you know? It's a protected right that they can access their own medical record. Yeah.
Which is really helpful.
Oh, I'm glad. Thank you.
Adam, if you'd like to.
Well, with the administration of the DLA 20, Adam, I know it's, I may have missed it earlier, I know it's at least administered semi-annually. Is that a state mandate?
No, this is OCHN's assessment protocol. Yeah. And again, I think that that works well because that really aligns with when somebody's IPOs would be, would be reviewed.
I'm wondering in the, with the fact that it looks at activities of daily living, whether there's enough variability in the scores every six months to necessitate a relook at that every six months?
May certainly be the case that for some of those daily living activities, for some folks, we're not going to see much variability. And that could be because it's a strength for that person, that could be because they have the right, just the right level of support in that area. However, I suspect that if you're looking across all 20 of these daily living activities and supports and services are really planned well and targeted, we would see some variability. Yeah.
Adam? I've got a few random questions. I hope I can find some sort of a common thread to ask them. First of all, it seems to me that if your supports coordinator doesn't know you very well, that you're really not going to get maybe the information that you need. How do you assure that that level of familiarity exists before there's even an attempt to try and address the DLA 20?
This was an often raised concern in talking with some of the specialized residential providers, who really know people very, very well because they're spending lots and lots of time supporting them. The strength of the tool is that you can really pull from multiple sources to get that information, so we don't have to rely on one person, one supports coordinator's or one case manager's knowledge of that person. It's really an information gathering process.
I misunderstood then. I thought you said that it was, the attempt was to get an unbiased, somewhat neutral perspective on someone's ability to do the tasks that are identified in the DLA 20. So, I mean, I do understand how important collaboration is and how important knowledge of an individual is, but doesn't that kind of blur the line a little bit?
It's in the scoring that we look for, that conflict-free, unbiased supports coordinator and case manager to really rely on their training in using this tool to arrive at the appropriate score, pulling from the information they've gathered from multiple sources.
I think that most people would think that families and individuals know, are the experts. That's really where the true, I think, pure information is. But if you, since we're talking about specialized or residential, you could have a home where six people live with a variety of abilities. How do you address that in that setting, in terms of staffing and in terms of supports being properly deployed?
That's a, that's a complex question, and that's really, I think, one of the key challenges for specialized residential providers. We probably have homes right now where individuals have a very wide variety of needs and they're funded, the services for those individuals are funded accordingly because we have a consistently applied method to determine how to fund the services on an individual basis. So somebody could be receiving one-to-one supports in a home, or somebody is really at our standard base rate because they don't have the highest needs within that level of care.
I'm having a little bit of difficulty picturing how that might play out and assuring that everybody gets the proper level of support and service, you know, that they need in that environment. That would seem very challenging. I can certainly see where that, that's complex, but like, critical. It has, it has to be right. Otherwise, you're not going to have any kind of success or the desired positive outcomes down the road for people moving on and realizing their potential. So that worries me a little bit. The other thing is that I've been in a lot of specialized residential settings over the years. I've, I monitored group homes for about 25 years, so I've seen a broad variety. And how people are supported in those environments really does vary. And I just, I'm going to say the obvious is that the turnover is probably the biggest potential cliff to be falling off in the long run because none of this works unless people really are tuned in to who they're supporting and know them well and see them as people. So I think all the assessments that we have do need to be looked at in the most flexible way, because on any given day, somebody can be having, you know, they're totally on top of their game, and, you know, it could be three days later that they just don't have their, you know, all their mojo isn't working in the same direction. So I'm glad that there's a broader look at people and broader support. And I understand that this is not necessarily focused on the outcome per se, but without a proper assessment with the proper support, I don't know how, how we can really get to the great outcomes that we're after for people. So, I mean, this is something that really needs, I think, constant monitoring for sure. I appreciate that there's three and a half hours of training, that that's great, but I think in the end, it's just knowing the person well enough to know. It's not only what they need, it's how they need it, you know, because there isn't one way to accomplish any positive outcome. So I see this as, is really a very significant challenge. The information's been very helpful, but there's a lot, I think, that is yet to be learned.
I'd just add to that really quick, just so that it's very clear that this, as Adam touched on this a little bit, but I just want to make sure it's understood, that this is really, the utilization of the DLA 20 to help us make sure services were funded equitably and consistently based on needs was really the first step in moving to outcomes-based contracting for the, for people in a residential setting as well. So you guys all are well aware of, of that goal of ours, is to make sure that we're using outcomes-based contracting. So making sure we're funding things appropriately first is kind of the first step. And once that's done consistently, we can move on to more of the outcome measures and the outcomes that we want to make sure we're, we're getting from the services that are being purchased. So I just wanted to make sure that that was clear, that this is just the first step in that process, to kind of level the playing field and make sure that we're funding everything at the rate it should be funded at.
My other question is, what is the CIS? Because people come up with the acronyms. I'm not just picking on you, but when you give the acronyms and don't give the definition of it, people who don't know, don't know. That's my first question.
What is the CIS?
What's the CIS?
Supports Intensity Scale. It's a, it's a quite lengthy assessment tool that's administered to individuals who have intellectual and developmental disabilities. It's done every three years. Typical administration takes about three hours, and it really looks at, casts a very wide net and looks at a person's functioning in many, many areas. And it's kind of, it's used for service planning. And it's, it's kind of, it's used for service planning and, and making sure the right intensity of supports are, are being provided, of course.
My, um, thank you. My other question is, every time I hear a, a presentation about an assessment, I wonder about the questions that are being asked on these assessments, is there any way that we can see the questions, just to see what people are being asked?
Sure, I mean, I, I don't have, I'm not prepared to show that to you right now.
But it, it always, you know, I always wonder, what are we asking people?
Yeah.
And how are we asking people? So, without seeing the questions themselves, it's hard to, to know that, but being a person that's real asticler for people personally, language, not saying that the questions aren't, but just to be able to see how the, what, how the, what the questions are, to see what we're asking people and the way we're asking the questions.
I can say this, that really when, when you're looking at the tool itself, it's, it's really not a series of questions that you, you ask and get a response and, and put a score down, you know, the, the tool itself really looks like, there's a daily living activity, right, and here's an example of somebody who has strengths in this daily living activity, and here's what it might look like if somebody has some, some needs associated with this daily living activity, and the more intense those needs are, it's indicated in the description that's associated with it. So, you're kind of, again, pulling from multiple sources, maybe asking some questions, but they're not especially scripted questions. So, somebody who wants to be very, you know, sensitive in the language they use would have the ability to do that without necessarily deviating from a script of questions that is, that are affiliated with the tool.
Person, so seeing the tool, I think, would be helpful for me, I'm just asking for me.
Appreciate the questions the other board members have asked and before me. So, I'm somewhat familiar with ADLs, so the assessments, aids to daily living used in the hospitals by social workers, nurse case managers, OTs and PTs. So, this DLY 20 sounds very similar, correct me if it's not, but one of the things I wonder about is the consistency of people doing the assessment, it's not just because they've only had three hours or three and a half hours of it, but the consistency of one person is assessing a person, if a different person assesses that same person maybe six months later or 12 months later, will they, I know one of the challenges with these simplified assessments is making sure that everyone, everyone who looks at the same person, they look at you, and if, if the DLA 20 included the color of your jacket, they all say that that's, I think that's black, they'd all say, yes, it's black.
Therein lies the problem, right?
Yes, so the consistency of the, of the assessment. So, how do we, what do we do, or how do we do remedial training to ensure that consistency of the assessor's assessment?
And I think ongoing training is really important, that's certainly available, I know many supports coordinators and case managers have come back for training more than once, the fact that we're self-sustaining as an entity with regard to training on DLA 20, I think is a, is a, is a strength of ours. Having a process by which disparity between what a residential provider and what a supports coordinator, case manager, thought was an appropriate score was instrumental in us transitioning on to this new rate methodology, how we continue those efforts, I think, is something that will be worked out. The tool itself, basically, in, one of the rules of thumb in administration is if you're not sure, err on the side of the person is going to maybe need more supports in this area as opposed to less, right? And, and essentially, without going into excessive amount of detail about the scoring of the tool, what it really does is it takes an average of those 20 daily living activities, an average of the scores indicated for each daily living activity, and that's really the final score. So, if you're averaging 20 items, there's a bit of, like, getting one item off by a point or so is not going to, like, tank the whole score, yeah.
One of the, one of the points of, or one of the issues people would raise when they talked about CIS, intensity, the specialized intensity score, was that they would look at, specialized, did I get it wrong on the?
Supports intensity scale.
Supports intensity.
I know what you mean.
For the CIS was that, it was assessing someone and their ability to make a peanut butter and jelly sandwich, you know, and that data was going, yes, that's what I'd heard, it was sort of ridiculous. I think they were just trying to use an analogy, but that, all that, the results of the CIs went up to the state, although what the state ever does with them, I have no clue, that's commentary, not the part of the question, doesn't seem to affect our race, doesn't seem to affect anything. Since I'm on that tangent, does the, does the state also collect our DLA 20 data as well, or is that just used internally?
It's used internally right now, this is, the, the CIS is required, it's part, it's a contract requirement in, in our contract with the department, DLA 20 is not, yeah.
Answered my third, so I'll go to the second question. All right, you mentioned that there's some sort of, we work very tough, we work very well in trying to ensure there's no conflict of interest between the people doing the assessment and the people delivering the services, or the fees for the, receiving revenue for it. So, does that mean that the service coordinators and the care, and the case managers, they work for different, see, core provider organizations than the, than the direct providers that might report to one of them? So, so go ahead.
If I'm an individual receiving services, I have a case manager or a supports coordinator from Mork or CNS or Easter Seals, my, my residential provider might be progressive, jark, you know, it's a completely different provider, unaffiliated with the core provider. So, the supports coordinator comes and meets with me and my natural and paid supports and, you know, garners the information necessary to complete this DLA 20 assessment, and there's an outcome to that, right?
Revenue's coming from us to the core provider, don't go down to the, to that residential provider, we're paying them directly.
We, we pay the residential provider directly now, that's part of our obligation, directly contracting with them as of October 1 of 2018.
That's one of the flattening of our organization.
Right.
Okay, thanks, that clarifies.
Of course.
Just two more, one's a little bit redundant and I apologize, but I was really sure I'm clear. So, one of the things you said, I think it's, there's 20 questions or 20 sections or whatever there is here, and you said equal weighing, weighting, is equal weighted, you take 20 scores and divide it by 20, and there's your score? That seems strange.
The, okay, I'm, I think, I think I know what you're, you're referring to, so I'm going to talk about this, the standard administration and scoring of the tool. You score 20 items, and then you divide by 20, and that's your average, and, and then that is the, ultimately the score. What we have started to do when we developed this new rate methodology and started using DLA 20 to crosswalk to an acuity tier that's associated with the rate, is we weighted some items particularly more than others because there are clearly some items that are going to necessitate a staff person in a residential setting to be doing some more hands-on type of work. So, we thought those items needed to be considered more.
And, really throw complexity into it, but it seems like it'd be different for different people, different way. I, I want to go back to the one about the IPOs versus the DLA dash 20. Who from OCHN, is it you and your staff, who provides some type of consistent audit of saying, this score makes sense based on this IPOs? Because, you know, in the IPOs, you talk about the needs, you get that all lined up first, and then you get into the goals and all that kind of stuff. Is that what happens? Does OCHN, does someone in your group or you, like, say, okay, let's take a look at this person's IPOs, and let me see the score you just received, and let's see, does this, is this apples and apples or apples and oranges? What's, what's going on here?
No, I don't, I'm not personally involved in that, however, we do have a, a protocol in our utilization management manual that speaks to service planning, I believe we audit on all those protocols, including that one, and so, you know, a sample of, a, a sample of plans of service are taken, looked at as part of an audit where, where the DLA 20 would sort of come onto the radar here, is the person conducting that audit would look at various things, including, are the needs that are identified throughout the assessment process, including DLA 20, are those showing up in the plan of service?
That audit, which we do on an annual basis, that's just kind of randomized, though, for any folks that are receiving services in that particular network, but for this specific rollout, as we're still working through this, when a residential service provider has said, we don't believe this assessment accurately reflects the amount of support, we have clinical folks with strong clinical background that take a look at not only the IPOs, but as well as any other assessment data that's been collected, so going back up to a full year, sometimes back to when the person first came into services, looking at progress notes, looking at periodic reviews, looking at all of those things, and seeing, does it match? And in instances where it did not match, we have then contacted the core provider back to say, this documentation doesn't line up, so please go back and redo this DLA 20. So, we're not trying to dictate what those scores are because we're not face-to-face with the person, we're not working with their families, but we are making sure that the documentation is consistent, and then where instances where the documentation from what we can see is consistent, and the providers still disagrees, we are working out some type of, of fair facilitation mediation system to, to figure that out, because like Anya said, we want fair and consistent and equitable rates, and you can speak to that more if you want, but when we first pulled in those contracts, you know, each core provider had a different approach or methodology for how to fund this particular service. So, you had similar people, maybe with similar needs, all living in the same home, receiving a different rate for the same thing. And so, we're trying to figure out how to be as transparent and as equitable and as fair as we possibly can through this process, and so that was, that was kind of the impetus for using the DLA 20.
One thing I would add to that is that when we started developing this rate methodology, that we did this in conjunction with residential providers, so we did not do this by ourselves, this was a year-long process that included multiple revisions and talking about the different factors that play into the staffing costs, the turnover, the overtime, all of those things are accounted for within the rate methodology, and we did really try to make sure that we were, we were taking into account all of the needs of the provider and the provider associated costs.
Okay, any other questions? I'll come back to that turnover because that's the, that's the thing that drives costs. I'd the board with the concerns of the family members, to Patrick's point that he brought up earlier, there are family members that hesitate bringing up complaints because they're fearful of what repercussions they may witness. I think it's bad, but it's true, I've heard it from other people. And, and the lastly is, it's the same system that the state, that the state does, they take the money, however it comes down to them, they split it up amongst whatever formulas they have, to all the providers, I mean, to the counties or, let's just limit it to counties, and the county splits theirs, and somehow, there's got to be some concentrated effort on getting rid of so many middle people that take a fee for handling the monies and giving it to the people who are providing the services. That's my last comment. Any other questions? I don't see any, let's go to the next topic. Thank you very much, Adam. The next is a CMH, CMHA Spring Conference and the June 8th Committee of the Whole meeting conference.
It's such a mundane topic compared to what we've been talking about, but nonetheless, the department has, or CMHAM has set the date for the spring conference as June 9 and 10, and obviously, prior to conferences, people have to get there and there are some preliminary meetings, so that puts us in conflict with our June Committee of the Whole date. So, in looking at our calendar, and we'll, we'll vote on the actual date at the board meeting because we'll have to amend our calendar, but in the meantime, what I want you to think about, leading up to that vote, is alternatives to scheduling for June. Our board meeting is set for June 16, and our study session is set for June 25, and we need to figure out a couple, I, I guess there's a couple ways we could go, I'll throw one idea out, just for your food for thought, is that we could move our board meeting to the 23rd and our Committee of the Whole to June 15, or we could talk about moving the Committee of the Whole up to Monday, June 1st. Anya assures me that if we plan ahead, we can still get the information we need covered, and then keep our board meeting at June 16. I'd be happy to hear any thoughts on the subject, like I said, we're going to, we'll make it official at the board meeting, but we will need to change our calendar, we do approve it annually, and we'll need to approve the amend, amended dates. Does anybody have any thoughts about, direction might be?
For myself, I'd rather go to the first.
Yeah, we, we will, we have, it'll be still a little bunchy, but not as, because the May study session is the 28th of May, it'll be the previous Thursday, and the following Monday would be, if you're looking at June 1st, that would be the Committee of the Whole preferred, perhaps, Jonathan?
I'd be fine with the 1st of June as well.
Out of town that day, but that's.
It's difficult when the schedules change, I, I completely understand that, a lot of us make our plans well in advance and then things happen, so.
Reese and I bring that one up and just change one date, it's, it's change one versus changing two old dates, that's all.
I like the 1st as well.
Well, I'd say that the straw vote is June 1st, and we'll make it, we'll have further discussion at the board meeting next week, and we'll finalize that decision then, but keep in mind that maybe the 1st might be the preferred date for the majority of the board, and just leave it at that. Okay, thank you.
The next topic is public comment, and Mr. White?
Hello? Hello? There we go. Okay. So, I, I'd like to, to maybe make a few comments on the presentation that Adam gave. First of all, I, I do have to push back on the collaborative statement. I saw natural supports included on the slide, and I, I can tell you that
I saw natural supports included on the slide and I, I can tell you that in most cases, and I won't say never, natural supports, parents and guardians have not been notified of or included in this process. There's no requirement for a sign-off on the results of the assessment, on the accuracy, like there is on the PCP or IPOs, that they agree with the assessment. And when it's done in their absence, I want to give you an example of what can happen. The supports coordinator shows up at, at my son's residence at 10:00 a.m. and he's sitting at the breakfast table and he's eating a bowl of cereal. He's dressed, he's clean. And the question is, can Freddie dress himself? Well, yes, with, with some help, the caregiver might answer. Can he feed himself? He's eating a bowl of cereal. Yeah, he can feed himself. Can he bathe himself? Yeah, with some supports. What's missed in all that is that, in reality, my son needs his food cut up. He can't eat by himself. He needs, he needs direct support. My son can't bathe himself, but he looks neat, he looks clean in that assessment. He can't dress himself. He could, but he'd end up with maybe a different colored sock on each foot and not so clean underwear, maybe. So without the direct involvement of the natural supports, the parent guardian in this process, you're, you're not going to get accurate data and a response, especially when the individual served is, is nonverbal, has lower function in terms of cognitive capability, can't understand the question, and somebody's answering for them. And in that case, it is imperative that the parent, the guardian and natural supports be there to represent that individual, or you're going to get and accumulate flawed data that drives rate methodology, which is what's happening. In many, many cases, and what you have in front of you is a collection of concerns that have come in to the Parent Alliance Metro Detroit email address. And in many cases, parents, they weren't even aware of the DLA 20. There was no training or knowledge shared with them that it was happening. They found out by accident or through one of my action bulletins that I sent out. So when they asked for a copy after quite a period of time, they got it, they looked at it and said, "Well, wait a minute. I, I don't agree with this assessment." So there was a reassessment. And in some cases, if the original assessment was at a four, it dropped to a two. And it was because the parent was there to really clarify and more accurately get, and you talk about an unbiased, I, I'm just worried about the accuracy of the input and the response. So I, I agree that, you know, I, I understand what you're trying to do to drive rate methodology and commonize, but, you know, the CIS assessment, even though it's done every three years, when you apply that to the IDD population, whose challenges are habitative, not rehabilitative, they don't change every three months. I wish my son's needs did change every three months for the positive, but they don't. So once more, we have another assessment tool that in my estimation personally and the estimation of many parents and guardians, is being rolled out in a flawed way. I've, I've seen emails that have been generated from OCHN to the provider network that, that say, yes, there are contingents to be a misalignment with electronic health records for an individual. There are comments that literally there are hundreds of, of cases that need to be reevaluated and reassessed. And be patient with us because we know that the rates are wrong and we'll make them retroactive to October 1st of 2019, once they're clarified. So I, you know, what I submit to you is that I don't feel that the process is being rolled out in a prudent manner. There's a heavy amount of weight being put on a DLA assessment for rate setting, and I don't think that tool was designed to do that specifically in the way it's being rolled out and managed. So I ask you, take a look at each of the points that I've summarized. They're not my points, they're points that are coming from a variety of parents and guardians impacted by this. And, and they're, please answer and respond to the questions because every one of them, there's a question behind the statement. And I will say that it sounded like OCHN has their hands around this and it's a coordinated alignment effort with IPOs and, and with the DLA 20, and if there's a discrepancy, it's addressed. I gotta tell you, I think in my perspective, that it's the parents that bring these discrepancies to the attention of OCHN, not the other way. So please, I won't read every one of the comments, but I urge you, I urge you to look at them and dig deeper into this because it's not a responsive way to set rates. Thank you. Oh, and training. I know you've got a February 21st training, but I, whoever said and was concerned about the turnover of supports coordinators, it's valid. I think their caseloads are increasing as well, so there's more burden. When I look at the list of assessments, there's HCBS, Supports Intensity Scale, the DLA 20 Assessment, the DD Proxy, the Craft Screening, and not to mention, there's a yet-to-be-defined another assessment that's part of the 1915 I waiver proposal. It's, it's another assessment coming at us, all under the responsibility of a supports coordinator. Thank you. Mr. White?
Evening. Okay. I, I just would like to echo the same concerns that Mr. White shared with you and if you read through some very significant things. I would like to thank Ms. Summers for your comments about the parent involvement. I, I think for most of us parents that I've spoken to, I, I became aware of, and I think Mr. White and myself are pretty, pretty well-informed. We're, we're very well-educated with what's going on in the community and that affect our, our children. I first became aware of the DLA 20 in July of 2018 and I was, what, what is this? And, you know, nobody really could give us any kind of answer. I do have the, the scoring rules here. If you want to make copies, that go over the categories that are viewed in the 15 to 30 minutes. I, I just feel that, feel that there's not been transparency when you're talking about collaborative efforts. I would like to know how OCHN has, has brought in parents to get input on this assessment being done, like it is for a person-centered plan or the IPOs. People are invited to attend that. An invitation is extended out, which should have been mandated for this. The PCP and IPOs are really, really important, but more importantly now is that it's tied to the rates. So without those rates, all the services and supports that your loved ones need, if you're, the money doesn't follow, it's really of no importance. So I would just ask that going forward, I, I'm, you know, this is apparently very new to the committee here. The DLA 20 sounds like it's as new to you as it is to the parents. So, and that I take a little bit of, you know, solace in that, you know, we're not the only ones who weren't misinformed in it. So I would just appreciate going forward that parents be included. Otherwise, it, it, it becomes apparent that people's voices aren't not being heard here and respected. So thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments and whoever you decide to, you know, deal with the subject. Have you heard?
Apologize, I thought you were moving on. I'd like to thank the board. In particular, I was very impressed with your comments and questions. They really touched to some of the things that I'm concerned about, so. My first comment, and I've been writing notes all over the place, so I'll jump around, was that if OCHN really thought that this was a great tool, why weren't they blowing their horn and announcing that they had this nice measurement device? Much the same way as the CIS had extensive meetings and explanations and training that we did not see here at all.
I guess I have two comments. Why are we having an information meeting today after it has been in effect for over a year? And we have a letter from OCHN that says, "Understanding the daily living activities DLA 20 assessment with a date of 12/17/19," after it's been in effect again for over a year. I don't follow the, the, don't follow that, I guess. We also mentioned the DLA 20 scoring rules. Is this the official rules? There's no implementation, implementation date? There's no copyright of the organization that has us follow this rule? If I understand it, this would be a good part of the training that is involved in the people that are administrating this tool. I, as a parent, my daughter's 46 years old, lives in a group home, attends a community activity program, have found out about this assessment very much in piecemeal. It was not mentioned at my daughter's PCP last July. Attempts to get this assessment and understand it has been very difficult. Earlier this year, I finally went up the ladder and am finally meeting with my support coordinator tomorrow, and the meeting, this meeting and the others are coincidental, to see the form, to see my daughter's results and to consider whether or not a reassessment is called for. I do not believe, personal opinion, kind of anecdotal information, that the support coordinators are really tuned in to this assessment. I also struggle, just personally for my daughter. Doing this assessment in six months or a year or five years, my daughter is going to have the same challenges. Now, I understand if something medically comes along, that it might get worse, but if you go back 10 years ago, most people would identify the same challenges as she And when, I guess I'll wrap up here. I, I appreciate the challenge of OCHN. It has this pile of money, it has to allocate it someplace, some way, and it is not easy. But it really feels like the DLA 20 is a, how do I divide the money process? And so eventually, it feels like my daughter will be thrown into a base, moderate, high evaluation pot, and that will determine the services or some of the funding that goes along with it. So I back up what the other speakers said. I founded a very, a not well-put-together, communicated parent involvement program. And I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much for your points. The next item? Oh. Sorry, I apologize, but you're welcome to come up and speak. And if there's anyone else that's not on the list, please follow.
Doing that right? Okay, okay, great. My name is Dorothea Pavlichuk and I have a daughter, I'm living in a group home in Troy. And I just, recently, actually, she had the SIS assessment back in December, and, which is the one that's given every three months, the Supports Intensity Scale. And there was one person that was supposed to come to the meeting and I said, "Oh dear, does that mean we cancel it to the, to the supports coordinator?" And she said, "No, the, the, the protocol for that particular scale is that she has to run it, the supports coordinator, and then there has to be two people that really know the consumer well." You know, so that would have been myself, and then her day program coordinator was there. So we didn't need that third person. Also, my daughter had to be present for 20 minutes for that assessment to be credible. So when it comes to the DLA 20, I don't understand what the policy is because that was given without my knowledge and the supports coordinator did it. When I found out what the scoring was, I, I said, "This does not reflect my daughter." And it was redone. But the SIS has criteria, an actual protocol, and it seems like that's what's missing with this DLA 20, that it can just be done unilaterally without the guardian knowing about it, and that there really isn't this collaboration that supposedly was talked about today. I really do appreciate your comments about, about, you know, the supports coordinator and the turnover, because it's a great concern and that it definitely, when, when rates are being determined by someone that doesn't know your daughter very well or your son, and maybe has only been put on your, your son's or daughter's case for only six months, they really don't know that individual very, very well, especially when they're only going out to the home or the day program once a month. That's six visits and then they're going to assess, you know, your son or daughter. That's not a fair assessment. And they don't even spend more than like 30 minutes. I mean, if that, you know? So anyway, that was one of my other concerns. The other thing that I wanted to say, that there, Adam had talked about, oh, this assessment can be redone anytime, so if a change occurs. Well, what was very puzzling to me is, who determines there's a change? That all of a sudden, this, this assessment's going to be redone? So I just, I, I think that, you know, there's some real flaws in, in how this is being The other thing that I wanted to say about the DLA 20 and the SIS is that what happens when there's a big discrepancy? Is anybody looking at that in terms of fairness? I mean, if you saw my daughter's scoring for the SIS and then you saw the first DLA 20 that was done, it would have been a huge discrepancy. It would not have shown a fair, consistent, credible measurement, you know? And who's looking at that? The, the last thing, comment that I'd like to make is that I did, you know, I'm learning myself, I mean, about all these different. myself, I mean, about all these different assessments and services and rulings, and my daughter, she does qualify for a Home Community-Based Services ruling. She has the HAB waiver. And I was told, when I was, I was being trained through a webinar, and one of my questions was, how is my, you know, how are those services that are stated in the IPOs, the services and the support, how is that determined? And I was told that the ruling of the Home Community-Based Services Rule is that it's driven by the IPOs. It should not be driven by a 20-minute assessment, the DLA 20. And that's a big concern to me. The IPOs is what drives what the needs and the supports are for that individual. Thank you very much.
Am I calling you, Dorothy? I didn't catch. Do you mind filling this out with your address? Thank you very much for your comments. Is there anyone else that would like to make public comment? Right around the room and have some board member comments.
I really appreciate the discussion about the DLA 20 tonight. It was really fruitful in my mind, really brought a lot of things to the forefront. Also, the HAB overview is also very enlightening every time it's given, and I look forward to hearing a little bit more about that again during our board meetings. So I thought a very successful meeting tonight.
Thank you, Adam. Thank you, Chair. I missed the update on the building, but I did read the notes, so I'm glad to hear we're moving forward on the RFP response, to select a new voter, or to confirm them. I always find it interesting with the Quality Improvement Plan program, what we're doing, so I'm glad the Marquita and crew were here to report on it. And while we had the topic today on DLA 20, Daily Living DSL, whatever it is, I'm going to butcher the initials. Anyhow, Daily Living 20 Assessment. I'm always scratching my head about the CIS Assessment as well, because the state requires it every three years. Maybe we should be doing it every year to assess our folks for a level of needs, but the state, whether they needed it or not it every three years, that never really does anything to affect what we get anyhow. So it was a challenge.
I want to thank everybody for, and your team, Anya, because, you know, some of that information is really powerful and important to get out. I do think we have some gaps of communication that we got to work on, of getting out not just to the board, but to the community in a whole. I'm not so sure how to solve that yet, but I'm working on it in my head. But I think some of this stuff is just miscommunication, or non-micuic communication, or whatever it may be. But for the quality review, that was very good. And Todd, you know, I'm sure you were waiting for some errors, but you handled them well. But I think it was very good, and I very much appreciate people taking the lead and sharing that information, because I know the public in large really wants to know.
First of all, I'm glad to be back on board, and I had so many greetings at the front door that was really nice, so. And I had to set a time limit to the hugs, otherwise they're going to be standing in line still. Patrick Kemp, I want to welcome you to the board, and it looks like you're making very valuable contributions already. I think you're going to find it very enlightening, very fruitful, and very meaningful, and we certainly enjoy your input, so thank you very much. So again, I'm glad to be back.
First of all, I have a couple of announcements. Kevin Song is having a special PBS airing tonight at 10 o'clock. Youth Suicide Conversations, No Educator or Parents Should Miss. And it includes highlights from a day-long session that was held at the annual Kevin Song Conference, I think it was like two weeks ago. So I did bring some information if somebody wanted to take one. When it comes to suicide, that's one of those topics that's close to my heart, because it really reads me that you have five-year-olds contemplating whether or not they want to live. So whatever we can do to impact that, we need to do. So I just wanted to announce that. In case people wanted to catch it, I might have to, what is it, DVO, DVI, whatever, because I'm going to be in bed. I could feel it coming. My second announcement is there will be a meeting of the Oakland University Pontiac Initiative Early Childhood Group on February 18th, from 11:00 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. at the Peace Academy in Pontiac. The topic of discussion will be identifying the gaps in service delivery, mental health service delivery, for youth in the Pontiac School District. The group is comprised of people from the community, advocates, and people from nonprofit groups that are working with youth in the Pontiac area, as well as faith-based leaders, providers of mental health services in Oakland County, staff from Honor Health and Oakland County Health Department, as well as administrators from the Pontiac District. The two professors that are heading up this initiative are Dr. Shannon McNair and Dr. Tamoko Wakabayashi, I think. I killed it. She just says, call me Tamoko. So Tamoko, and she's a wonderful person. I love working with her. But they're associate professors of Human Development and Child Studies at Oakland University, and they're the ones that are working around early childhood development, and they're spearheading the effort to improve the outcomes for children in the city of Pontiac. I've been saying for many years that we need to do more for the children in Pontiac. That's one of the reasons why, when this opportunity opened up for me to participate in a massive effort to do a trauma training to the high school students at the Pontiac School District, we, over a four-day period, we show portions of the film resilience. If you have not seen this video, it is a must-see, because it really speaks to the science behind trauma. And we say that we're trauma-informed, but I have to take issue with that, looking at the way that we provide services, the way that we treat the people that we serve, not just in Oakland County, but just nationwide. It was over 700 kids, and in my ninth-grade class, I had two boys and a girl that cried. There are a lot of children who are in distress. It's a well-known fact that there's more children in Children's Village from the Pontiac District than any other school district in Oakland County. It's a well-known fact that there's more children taken into foster care than any, from Pontiac, than any other city. And I've asked legislators, I've asked all kinds of people, it can't be that the parents within the zip codes of the city of Pontiac can't parent. There's something else going on here. So we need to address the disparities. We need to do whatever needs to be done to make sure that we have better outcomes with mental health service delivery for the young people in the city of Pontiac. Thank you.
Change the subject a little bit. About four of us were up at the CMHA conference and got to listen to Sarah Estey, who's, I think, deputy, anyway, under Director Gordon. And she explained to us how they're going to turn the system inside out, and she said, but, there's some problems that we're just not going to be able to handle right away. And that's because there's, I can't remember the number, maybe $165 million underfunding. We all know it's a lot more than that. And we're just going to take that, because we don't have a solution for that, and put it over here. So they're basically going to tear a whole system apart, so they can put it all in one place and not have to do anything but oversight and let it manage itself, take all our money away and give it to one Medicaid health plan, make one SIP, or who knows. They really don't know what they're doing, but they're determined to take it all apart, where our main problem is underfunding. A couple of people talked about direct care worker wages, caseworker wages. That's, they're putting that aside over here, because there isn't any foreseeable solution to it, and then dismantling the whole rest of the system and putting it back together, however long it takes. So that's kind of scary to me, because a lot of our problems, the evaluation, so we can know how much rates and how many, how much services need to be provided, that would all be solved if we had enough money.
That's a fact to follow. For that inspiring. Yeah. I just, is Ellen Bolter still coming in March?
Oh, at the advocacy.
He's coming to our board meeting? Okay, and he's going to be talking about the system redesign turmoil, chaos, underfunding, et cetera. So those of you here might want to come back for our March board meeting and listen to what Ellen has to say. He's always got the latest greatest, not greatest, the latest information, so. Quickly, everybody, please look at June 1st on your calendars when you get home, so we can make a decision at our next board meeting. And this is a good meeting, and I'm not going to elaborate on where my emotions went on this one. There's a lot going on, but I do always remind myself that all voices are important, and that the best thing we can do is listen.
Raise meeting was quite, again, very helpful, and we got a refresher on the fundamentals, and also look forward to the annual report. I would like to see how we have made an impact, or what has worked and what hasn't, and what the, how we compared with last year, if there are any, is there any good news? The DLA 20 raised a lot of questions, very good questions, and I think we'll have to take a deeper dive into that again. I was not at the CMHA meeting, because the news doesn't seem very promising from there.
I was one of those that got to go to the CMHA conference, and I thought it was a lot of good information, and thank the administration for allowing some of your staff to go as representatives, because I think it's important that there are different folks represented, and just hearing all the updates that are out there. And I would agree, tonight, I learned a lot on the DLA 20 information I didn't know, so I would appreciate more information or a deeper dive, just to kind of understand the rules and policies that go behind that, and be able to take a look at the actual assessment and scoring tools, please.
I'll also say that, you know, thankful to the persons that spoke in public comment and our presenter for just seeing and hearing the various different sides of the DLA 20. So I think it helped me to better grasp and understand. Additionally, I had an opportunity to go to the conference in Kalamazoo. You know, I think enough's been said about it, but one of the workshops that I went to while I was there was one about PTSD, specifically in soldiers that have returned from war. It was very interesting, you know, a lot of good information. And I think the conference, one of the best things that I like about it is just, you know, collaborating with some of the other counties and what they're doing, and having, you know, conversations with people who are equally as passionate about the issues that we tackle as board members, and what our various different organizations take on. So those are always good things, to make those networks and to get that information from people, and to share, you know, the passions of advocacy for the communities that we serve. Thank you.
Thank you, John Paul. And I would like to welcome you, Patrick, to this board. Congratulations on your appointment. You're going to enjoy it. I know you will, and you're going to be working with some very hard-working, dedicated staff people. You're all shocked, but I bought the records to indicate that we closed our meeting two minutes before schedule. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.